March 2nd, Planning and zoning board meeting to order, please stand for the bench.
The flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I will take roll call, member Ryan.
Here.
Sam Filippo is absent, McCarty.
Here.
Carstensen.
Here.
Madigan.
Here.
Turner.
Here.
And Chairwoman Henning is absent, so I'm looking for a motion and a second to appoint a temporary chair for the meeting.
I'll make a motion for a temporary chair to be Steve Ryan, second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Ryan?
Yes.
McCarty?
Yes.
Carstensen?
Yes.
Madigan?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Five voting yes, none no's. Floor is yours.
As far as I can go.
Mr. Kerrigan, any announcements or correspondence?
Just with one, two things, an update because of the village board, the last thing that was considered was, as you recall, Antioch Community High School did proceed with a rezoning and a site plan for their storage shed that was actually approved, resulting to M1 zoning and the site plan was approved at the last board meeting. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Kerrigan. Approval of the February 2nd, 2022 Planning and Zoning Board Meeting minutes are presented.
Motion to approve as presented.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Ryan?
Yes.
McCarty?
Yes.
Carstensen?
Yes.
Madigan?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Okay, five voting yes, zero voting no, motion carries. Okay, any public comment at this time for anything? Okay, any old business? Okay, we'll go on to new business, so in front of us tonight, we have PZB 22-01, consideration of request for tax amendment or text amendment, the section 10-10-10 of the Village of Antioch Form-Based Code to add a chapter for design review of exterior modifications for buildings within the village core.
Yes, thank you, ma'am, Mr. Chairperson.
Or madam.
Mr. Chairperson, thank you. This matter becomes before you for a tax amendment, according to public notice. This is public hearing being heard pursuant to public notice and according to law state statutes and applicable ordinances. This matter comes before specifically Mr. Chairperson, Chairman, I'm sorry, with regards to our request for a amendment to the Form-Based Code. You'll recall, we just amended the Form-Based Code several months ago as related uses. This comes before you with respect to another issue as we've been really struggling with. That relates to, as you know, our site plan review. Just to provide you a summary, if you build a new building anywhere in Antioch as it relates to commercial, institutional, industrial, multifamily, it requires a site plan review, as you know. This commission has reviewed numerous site plan reviews over the past number of years, but we've discovered kind of a loophole in our review process for downtown. As we speak right now, we do have the Form-Based Code, Form-Based Code does state that any building that has a 50% change to its exterior in the Form-Based Code does require a review process. But there's really no guidelines or standards which generally tells you what's appropriate, what's not appropriate. As you well know, those are site plan review, we have very specific criteria as regards to what types of materials you should use, the minimum landscaping, parking plans, very specific criterias, we go into trash and closures, foreign metrics. We spent a lot of time discussing all those, all those different provisions in our set plan review ordinance. But there's really nothing that really focuses, focuses on existing buildings. If you review the Form-Based Code, which was approved back in 2011, they spend a lot of time about making sure that new buildings that are developed in downtown are sensitive to the historical downtown patterns. There's nothing about exterior changes to current existing buildings. So based on that, we're bringing before you this evening a proposed set of guidelines or standards which would generally provide some regulation on how we regulate changes to downtown buildings in the Form-Based Code. So again, the purpose of the Form-Based Code is the framework for plan defines the desired physical form for downtown Antioch, sets developable building pattern parameters such as land use, building height, massing, siting setbacks, parking placements. We've discussed the Form-Based Code, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time going through the purposes. It's quite different than Euclidean zoning, so if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to walk you through that. Now, what's the applicability of the code? The applicability is any new development or construction, i.e. there's a vacant lot in downtown, somebody proceeds to build a building, clearly the Form-Based Code kicks in. Where I make sure that that new building is sensitive and consistent with, again, the downtown patterns. Number two, if primary use within the building changes. But number three, rehab projects that change over 50% of the building's exterior. So that's the kicker right there. So the reason we're bringing this before you is we obviously have a number of buildings which have clearly changed more than 50% of their exteriors. But again, there's no criteria or standards to evaluate what's appropriate or not appropriate. I mean, I think there's a clear general agreement, the village embraces its downtown. The words I use is, I hear a lot is historic character, character charming downtown. These are the words that come across, they're basically incorporating the village's vision statement. They're incorporating the village's comp plan. So the historical sensitivity is something that we consistently hear, but there's really nothing in our Form-Based Code, or in fact, any of our ordinances on that really enforce that sensitivity towards our historic character. So again, this is regulatory framework, this help, this plan helps define physical forms, specifically the components that must be considered when developing, rehabbing, renovating each of the districts, including all, a lot of the land uses within the Form-Based Code. So again, currently, as I reiterate, the current Form-Based Code has no specific provisions for existing buildings. So what is being proposed tonight is a series of standards or guidelines which will provide this commission, which will provide the village board, but more importantly, will provide building owners, future building owners, the ability to basically have an objective standard when they're proposing to change significant character exterior of a building in our downtown. So generally, everybody talking about, while there is no historic district, there are no individual landmarks in the village of Antioch. Now, we do have a preservation commission, which has for the past year, Ms. Ainsley Wonderland is actually here this evening, who is the chairperson. They've done a huge amount of work in the past year and create, also create an urban survey which identifies which buildings in our downtown are potentially historically significant. So this ordinance, again, is not a preservation ordinance, but it's consistent with the Form-Based Code. So I can walk you through that, I can walk you through the actual document, if that's what you'd like to do. But again, addresses certain things, so over the past number of years, I'll walk you through this. Unfortunately, many of our downtown buildings, insensitive exterior materials have been incorporated into our buildings. I can walk you through specifically what types of changes have been made to those buildings. They're, they're clearly insensitive, they damage the historical character of those buildings. So many of our buildings frankly are tired, have really poor materials, which are not consistent with the historical trends of today or best, best practices. So you see this, and I'll show you some examples of really poor, terrible materials used over the past several decades. When the alterations, we see a lot of our, of our historic buildings where the, when those have been alteredated. I'll walk you through some of those, you can clearly see that they were poor modifications. So that's another area where that there's been numerous modifications, so some of our existing historic building stock. Again, what we're, our goal in these proposed standards, as I'll walk you through, is to, again, try to restore these buildings if all possible, even if they're not historical landmarks, consistent, you know, consistent with our facade grant program. The general theme is to try to bring back the original materials, to try to back to the best ability to bring back the original historic appearance of these buildings. Roof alterations, I'll show you some buildings which have had major roof alterations, and again, modifications to original storefronts. So in sum and substance, these proposed guidelines are trying to address these specific areas that have had a huge impact on our historic building stock on Main Street and throughout our downtown. So this proposed tax amendment, again, is based on the historic character of the downtown. We do have a historic inventory that we're in the process of completing. Luckily, we had really one of the best historic preservation firms in Chicago, Grand Key Consultants, do a historic survey, which was a great foundation for us to work with. Back in 2006, they surveyed almost most of the buildings on Main Street, along with a significant number of single-family homes in our presidential areas back in 2006 as part of the Route 83 corridor plan. That's when IDOT was widening, widening Route 83 from its two lanes to current three lanes. Concurrent to that, in accordance with state and federal requirements, the historical survey was completed concurrent with that corridor plan. So this evening, I'm going to walk you through, if you so desire, the actual proposed guidelines. Much of the guidelines are actually based on the Grand Key Report, which was adopted back in 2006. And we're making favorable recommendations for the adoption, a recommendation for the adoption of proposed tax amendment. So with that, I can walk you through, depending on your prerogative, Mr. Chairperson, I can walk you through the actual design guidelines, or if you want to ask questions, it's your prerogative.
I mean, I read the report, so let me just see if anybody else wants to take time to walk through it, or if we just want to go ahead and ask questions that we have. Anybody got a preference on that? Okay, so I don't think I need, go ahead.
I, I would like to know what you considered outside of the realm of what historical preservation would be for the buildings in downtown, are you looking more at the facade? Or are you thinking of the whole project? In your 50%, is that 50% of, of a retrofit for each of the, of the buildings for the entire project? Or is it just for the facade?
It's, I would say, it's, the way I interpret it, based, I mean, it changes over 50% of the building's exterior. So when we're talking about facade slash exterior, I think those words are synonymous, exterior facade. I think are synonymous or same.
Exterior is exterior, it could be the back of the building, it could be the front of the building, it could be the side of the building, it could be the encompassed entire facade of the building. If it's specifically referred to as the facade or the facing portion of the building towards Route 83 in our historical downtown landmark look for what each of the building is, then it should be stated that way within the ordinance, is that how it's going to be changed?
Yeah, I think, I mean, it's a fair question because I don't think it's clear. By reading this section, it's not clear what that 50% is. You can read it for yourself, it's not clear whether there's off or four facades. Actually, most of the buildings we have, as you know, have shared party walls, so we're, we're directly, we'll be looking at the front and rear. Obviously, you can't make any exterior changes to the side elevations, if they're basically abutting two buildings on both sides.
But there are multiple buildings within our downtown district that have an open side facade.
There are, yeah, there are, yes.
And, and I, and I do want to be specific, if this is going to be a, a text amendment to what we have in place presently, it should be more defined to what we're looking at.
Right. Well, I think the question, and it's, it's a, it's a good question, and I think that's an open question for discussion. I, you know, my direct answer is open for your discussion.
And that's the only area that I would like to discuss is what are we going to be looking at for this particular text amendment? Is it the facade, the front that's facing Route 83 for our historical district? Or is it the entire building as, as it's encompassed, side, back?
I would propose, I would propose that any, what I think was reasonable and what really defines the character of Antioch is clearly the front, I think most people would have clearly, clearly would agree that.
I agree.
Yeah, that clearly the front would have an impact. I think a side elevation that faces the street, like, you know, obviously, we have several buildings. There's probably four or five buildings that actually have, you know, face Lake Street or Orchard. I think clearly a major change of those side elevations could have an impact, visual impact. I think I would submit that staff has less concerns about the rear of the buildings, you know, and that that would not include the 50%. Now, I know to be fair, I know the board has expressed some concerns about trying to improve the rears of these buildings. You know, that's something that's been discussed at the board, but, and theoretically, the facade program does cover theoretically the rears of the buildings, I mean, directly, you can apply for a facade grant, they're basically modified to improve the rear.
So the facade program covers the rear of the building, but, but the ordinance coming before us for changes and/or alterations to that does not? Or would it come before us anyway because it's part of the facade program?
Well, I think we're trying to define, I mean, you're, you're raising a good point. Now, I think it's all, what I'm saying here, there's no defined answer, it's an open question. I think I'm looking for your input, what you think is most appropriate. I think it'd be reasonable, I think I just suggested clearly the front elevation and the side elevation facing the street would, to me, would have the most substantial impact on defining the character of the, of, of Main Street and our significant streets in downtown. I think staff in, has a little less concern, we would love to see the improvement to the rears. But as you know, especially with the facade program, they're, they're defined limited funds. So, you know, we may be challenged from a fiscal perspective. They have a major substantial facade improvement of all the rears of these buildings. I think most applicants that I talked to are really focused on the front, front of their buildings. That's been my experience with the facade.
I agree. The only issue I have is that the backside of almost all of our buildings in our downtown, you know, Route 83 corridor, that's for, you know, business and what we do, on each side of all of those buildings, it's presented with plenty of public events that happen that, you know, give a second foot forward to that look.
No, you're right, you're right. I mean, we, we get complaints about people who go to the concerts at the band show, that they're looking at the backs of the buildings. And, you know, and there is, yeah, no, and there's been discussion about improving the backs of these buildings. So what I'm saying, I don't know if I'm directly answering your question, I don't have a direct answer because I'm really looking for your input. That's what we're discussing tonight, what, you know, we can modify, we could, you could say 50% of just the front and side elevation. You could say 50% of the whole building. If you wanted to, we could change that section of Form-Based Code, if you wanted to increase or decrease that. I mean, it's really an open, does that make sense? It's an open question for discussion tonight.
And justifiably so, I get it. I just don't know where to put the nail in the discussion to start with. Right, I suppose number one is the front. And then, is this completely tied to the facade program for the grants?
No, I mean, there's no direct connection. So theoretically, it's possible that somebody could come in and not want a facade grant. And, you know, obviously, the facade, facade guidelines are not applicable if somebody does not want a facade grant. So that's kind of the gap, there's a missing area there where somebody could come through and do whatever they want to their building because there's no, they're not, they don't want those money, i.e. the facade program. And they could, you know, they could paint their building purple or put corrugated steel on it, or whatever you can imagine, they could do.
That's a separate issue to this, it's a caveat of what we're looking at. I mean, obviously, we want some controls and interest for what we have on Route 83, period. And the back of the building is, is secondary, but yet important enough to think about. But it's, it's looking at the facade program as being its trigger.
So, I'm sorry?
So the front of the do so.
As we speak right now, you can paint your building purple.
That's, that's, that's the issue at hand for the front. All right, your, your text amendment, is that solving that scenario?
Well, it's solving as a relation, it gives you, i.e. the commission in the village board and potentially the historic preservation commission in some cases, an opportunity to look at what their applicants proposing to determine whether it's appropriate. You may say, you know what, you love the pink building, it's, it's your prerogative, you may say that's perfect for this type of use.
Truly get it.
And so it gives you the, the right to review it.
So the owner of Sparkle Company can paint the outside of his house in Elgin purple like he did with his product that he involved in the world, and the village sued him over it and they lost. I get it. So I just, I just want to, when we're going through this process, keep in mind, Michael, that you, you involve the back of the building as, as, as part of it. I know the sides are only basically two, two streets and, and a couple corridors that run from the back.
Right.
Are going to be involved in that, I know that you can tie that together, but.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with the back, and he said just, that gives you even more protection for review. Because obviously, 50% of three elevations is.
That would be very nice, that would be very helpful for the village to, to work with. I mean, obviously, we're not going to hold the building owners' toes to the fire and say, "Sorry, you can't have your project that's doing all this and, and this back end that's been there for 80 years is, is not getting improved, but please keep it in consideration for your future," which would definitely, and we can help you out with that.
Yeah, no, absolutely, that's what the facade programs for.
A, a positive way to help that out?
Yeah, a carrot, absolutely. Yeah, we see the facade program as a carrot. We're trying to be, we're trying to be business friendly here, we're not trying to create regulations for the sake of regulation. And that's what the facade programs there for, to help reimburse these building owners or business owners. Because renovation, as you well know, exterior renovations can, can add up and can be expensive.
All right, then the only thing I'd like to know is the facades that you see right now that have been negative for our village for its historic value on the fronts of the buildings? So that we can get a feel for where your mindset is for that? And, and it could help us maybe make some better decisions for what we have in front of us. There we are.
This case, the reason I, I, this, I just want to start with this picture, this is actually a picture from Naperville, which actually has tied up the city of Naperville for the past four or five months. It's been very controversial, I just took this picture on Sunday. This is one of his historic buildings, right off Jefferson Street in downtown Naperville, and I, this, I think, provides you a perfect summary of, you know, what we're discussing tonight. Now, whether that building, that, that color scheme is appropriate or not, some people like it, some people don't. So that, just, I thought it was appropriate for that. So I wanted to kind of walk you through some themes. You know, there have been insensitive, what we call insensitive changes to buildings. I know we're on Zoom, so I gotta stay close to the mic.
So in these two examples, you can see that on first to your left, the original materials of that building were changed. One thing that happened back, I think, in the early 1970s, a lot of our historic buildings on Main Street, there was a Mr., I believe, Rocco, if that's his name, and he used a synthetic cement material, looks like stone. Yep. So numerous of buildings along Main Street were covered over, their original historic appearances were covered over with that synthetic cement material. So that gives an example. Okay, that gives you an example of what can be done. So that's one example, many of those buildings have been covered over with a synthetic stone material. One of the long-term goals, I'm sorry, one of the long-term goals is to remove that, those insensitive materials. And that picture to the left shows you an example of Mr. Rocco's work. Secondly, the picture to the right shows you how, the second floor windows, you see the original historic openings. So those openings on the second floor, many of those buildings' windows were modified and covered up. In fact, the picture to your right, I believe you look at the historical appearance, there originally was a bay window there. So at some point in time, the bay window was removed, and that's where you see the, you can see where the brick was added. So that's one example. So those are two common areas with, which these proposed standards try to address, i.e. making sure the materials that are used are consistent with what we expect and making sure the windows are sensitive to, window changes are sensitive to what we expect.
What, what would that be?
Well, again, using, again, these are not per se landmarks, but we're generally using what we call Secretary of Interior Standards, kind of gives you a general philosophy, trying to bring back the original, at least window openings, a lot of times you can't use the original materials because, because of the expense, where you try to create a window design that's sensitive to the historical character.
As we would call it in the city of Chicago, glass packs or something.
Right.
That would, that would remove the, the glass panes.
Right.
Double-hung windows, yet keep the jam in place.
Correct.
And set a window within that opening.
Correct.
With today's standards for, for environmental and, 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 and.
For energy.
Energy.
Energy codes, so you try to, yes, there, there are manufacturers out there that basically create certain windows, I don't want to. Right, PEL is actually, wow, now, right, they, PEL is well-known for.
Ella Anderson and, and Kobe and Kobe would be very good situations for that to stay in place. So you still get your same.
Correct.
Architectural feel.
Right.
Because they, they kept the, the trim on the outside.
Correct.
The wood facade that's there, yet they've inserted a, a more modern window in place to make it
more energy efficient. Right, so if somebody is coming in and they want to redo their exterior and they want to replace this, they want to, you know, they want to completely modify all the windows, you have an opportunity to say, no, there are some alternatives. If you look at these alternatives.
But not a vinyl.
I mean, that's your prerogative, again, we, we don't get quite that specific, you know, actually, if it was like.
If I'm going to, if I'm going to take care of my downtown and make it proper, we should have specifics for that in mind because vinyls are very inexpensive. They don't fit with our, with our, our look of what we want downtown. And certainly don't give us the feel of what we have for historical Antioch and downtown feel, period.
Well, if you actually reviewed the standards, you could see that there's, you know, it gives you some flexibility. Again, the general, using the Secretary of Interior Standards, we're trying to, at all possible, not only to duplicate the look, but have materials that are, are sensitive to the building. So vinyl may not be appropriate. But again, that's really subject to your review. It's going to be, as you know, case by case or general standards. And to be fair, these are going to be less restrictive than, we are also, no, we're not talking about landmarks. Now, if a building comes in as a landmark, that's a completely different.
I get it.
It's a lot more restrictive, and we have, we have actually, the, the plant, I'm sorry, the Historic Preservation Commission just adopted what we call historic guidelines, which are a lot more restrictive than what we're talking about this evening. But they're landmarks, that's future landmarks, it's not, you know, so, but you're correct, vinyl may not be appropriate.
Yeah, but I don't want somebody who comes in after I've been dead, gone and buried to, you know, accept that as, as, as something that we would say is great for downtown. And I don't feel that that even fits our standards of what we want.
Well, we can modify, as we can modify this, these proposed standards, we talk about windows, so you can, you can add a section in there only, you know, steel, aluminum or wood, you could say prohibit vinyl, no vinyl is permitted.
I would, okay, all right, I'd run towards that direction, but it was up to me, but we'll, we'll go from there.
All right, let me just jump in, I have a question to jump in here on. When I look at these buildings and I look at your 50%, I wonder if that number is too large. If somebody comes in and says, I just want, you know, some of these buildings are two-story, some of them, I don't know if there's any on Main Street, it's three stories or not.
We have a couple, we have.
If it's me, you say, well, I'm just going to fix, I just want to replace some of the windows. And that, that would be less than 50% like that, and we would have no say so.
Correct.
So I think the 50% to me is a number that is, that is too, too large, because again, if somebody comes in and says, I want to fix everything at street level for that level there, and it's a three-story building, well, we have no say so now because they're only touching 30% of the building.
Right, and that's actually a really good point.
Yeah.
It's your prerogative.
50%, that, me, where it keeps falling to 50% out, I'd just like to, you know, discuss that, that number rate to start with. I think that 50% number is way high. Percent, that, me where it keeps falling to fifty percent out, I'd just like to, you know, discuss that, that number rate to start with. I think that fifty percent number is way high.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a good point.
You know, you take a whole side of a building and some of these buildings in town that have the side where the street's at or those. I think it's home and alleyway because you can't drive through them, but some of the buildings on Main Street there, you can, there's walkways down between the buildings. So you have that whole side of the building. Somebody can come in there, there's, there's a lot of square feet there. Somebody come in there and say. I wanna do all kinds of things and I won't be anywhere close to modifying fifty percent of the side of that wall. And now we, again, we have no say so on what the side of that wall's gonna look like, what they're gonna do with.
Right. No, that's, that's a good point.
So to me is that, uh, so me, we gotta start out with that fifty percent number and do something different and somehow describe. That if you're. You know, yeah, the facade of the building, but even the sides of the building or the back of the building and, and add on. How you wanna attack that just based on windows?
Well, I, I would suggest a percentage.
Opening, if you're changing any of the openings and things like that, you wanna add windows to the side of the building? We should get a look at it, even though there's not gonna be nearly fifty percent of the, of the, of the side of the building. Or they wanna, you know, things like that. So I, me does, that's, I think we need some discussion on, on, and rethink. I agree with what we're doing here a hundred percent. And I think it's very important that something like this gets done. I'm just don't know if right now, the way it's written, that, that's really gonna get you what, there's, to me, there's some big holes you could jump through. And we would have nothing.
Well, there's two ways to do it. You can either define it as lower percentage, pick a number. Or you could say that any changes to, you know, storefront windows, mid, oh, first floor materials, second floor materials, window changes. You can identify the four, six, seven bolt points. If you do this, I just don't want, I don't, you know, I'm trying to be somewhat business friendly. Somebody changes an awning, you know, do we really wanna bring before a plan commission or a village board? If somebody wants to repaint their front door, there may be changes that you say that, you know, maybe should be approved administratively or. That you have in, in the business owner, a building owner has a right to do that without coming to this commission or the village board. I mean, if this was a land, if this was a historic district, you would review everything.
Right, so I have, I have an example of something that was done. Oh, sorry.
Just real quick, so Michael, what you just said is, is exactly where I think I would go with this. Um, the pers- the percentage is one thing. But I think that there's specific situations here that we don't want. Obviously, the downtown's gotten to look this way over time, you know, for a reason. Um, we can't, we can't do it by percentage because somebody could paint a mural in one of these alleyways and that would. You know, be two percent change and there, we can't have it in that way. But I also understand what you're saying in terms of, we don't want. Thirty agenda items on every single one of these meetings for somebody just to change a color to an awning. So is there a way, you just referenced. If it falls within these guidelines, staff can approve.
Yeah, we could modify the language, what, what the trigger is for review. And we can incorporate bullet points specifically, you know, obviously certain things we all probably all agree. A major storefront change, changing the materials, ripping off the face brick and putting corrugated steel. Um.
Man, I'm not saying everything. I'm just saying there's certain things that probably don't have to go for review and certain things.
Right.
I, I recently went through a situation with a project in Grayslake. Uh, unfortunately, uh, Grayslake is a. A very unique animal. Anything that happens on a, on a facade downtown has to be run through staff. It needs to be approved for the material, the look, the color, the feel. Um, anything. And it's very prohibitive to, to the owner of the building and very restrictive to them where they. Are pigeonholed into a very small spectrum of what they can do for themselves, for what their look is and what they wanna do for their. For their project. I like the fact that we give the person an opportunity to come before us. To explain what they have as a business, what they're trying to accomplish as their look for their feel for their. Advertising for their brand, which is something that's very important today. Rather than saying, everybody's gotta look the same. Which historically, I get certain portions of that. But for business, it doesn't particularly always fit the mold. So we gotta have some kind of flexibility here, yet, um. If, if you, if you just leave your decision-making, which we've experienced in the other community, to the staff. Then, and or a professional company that's been hired by the village to review all of their work. Then you've lost your ability to be flexible and work with people of your community. And it really, really makes it difficult to gain more business and bring more people in and, and make things. Active and flexible and work. That's just a, a personal attribute that I've come across a few times there, but regardless. I, I certainly don't want people to come downtown and, you know, paint things pink and yada, yada, yada and make things their own. Whatever they feel is, you know, appropriate for their brand, which you showed previously in that one picture. That, you know, they may think is wonderful for their brand.
I, I wanna say one thing real quick. The state of Illinois has actually ruled on colors and relative to aesthetics for zoning. And you cannot zone based on colorings. So let's stop talking about that almost immediately. Because we keep on touching the color issue, which is per se illegal in the state of Illinois. So why don't we stay away from that rather than go towards it?
Rather than the pink.
Got it. Pink, blue, purple, green, commissioner, whatever color you wanna talk about, don't talk about. How about that?
That's fine, but the, the, the thought process is, is, uh, um. You know, to be flexible with it for them, for the, for the building owner and not just restrictive, but keep their. Brand of what they're gonna present before us in mind. I don't, I don't know how to. Perfectly make it flexible, yet restrict it in the ways we'll, that we're thinking about. That's, that's the tough part.
What's, what's that with regards to?
Well, historical look, you know, downtown's a.
Well, I mean, I, a lot of communities have appearance code. A lot, a lot of communities have appearance regulations, especially for downtowns.
Mm-hmm.
So they talk about this, there's design criteria. So I think we have a proposed order, a proposed set of standards which sets. Fairly specific, um, criteria for design. And they're using, again, again, a general theme of Secretary of Interior Standards, trying to be sensitive to the historical character. Uh, of, of the buildings itself. Obviously, you can regulate things like window changes. You can, you can, you can relate, you can relate materials. We do it in our site plan review work.
Right.
As you well know, we, we, we regulate, you know, materials already. So you can, you could, I think you do have legal authority to tell somebody, no, you can't. You know, there's certain materials you can use in this area. We do it already for commercial users.
Can I ask another question as well? So you said that this wouldn't be directly tied to the grant, the facade grant?
Correct. Separate, that's a separate analysis.
Could you somehow tie them together so that they mirror each other to some respect? Because I understand where, if you get a grant, right, we have more say in it, but again, shouldn't we have say in it regardless? So, and, and I would agree to, um. Commissioner McCarthy's statement earlier about you go to the ban shell, you know, the, the backs of these buildings. They, they just don't look, they don't look nice. I mean, they don't. Um, and so I think, although you, you. And again, to your window example, right? So you're saying keeping the frame and, and just modifying the window. Well, if doing that costs more money and they don't have it in their project, are we willing to say, hey? You don't have to follow all of the facade grant guidelines, but we'll help you with this window because it's gonna cost you five thousand dollars more. But it'll meet our require, you know what I'm saying? Like, do you, do we account for any of that?
Well, again, we, you know, when reviewing, uh, as an applicant who come, is coming through the process, there's also prerogatives to have that discussion, say. You know, we, this is, you know, we don't think that what your proposal is appropriate. We do have a facade program, i.e. the carrot program provides you. Um, you know, basically a carrot incentives. I hope basically subsidize those improvements. Um, so that's, you know, I think we have that opportunity, have that discussion with them. Again, but you, as you highlight, there, there is a gap here. There, you know, if you're not, obviously if you come in for facade grant. We have, the billboard has ultimate rights, say, this is not appropriate. Even with color, in that case. They can say, you know, we don't like the color, we're not gonna give you the money. Because there is no legal right to basically receive money from the village's. Facade grant program. It's, it's clearly at the prerogative of the billboard's review process. So, um.
But if we now wanna have a hand in what they're gonna do, whether they get money from us or not.
That's what.
You have to somehow tie them together. Even though they're separate, I think whatever guidelines you have for that facade grant program, you have to tie into whatever decision is made on just. Regular exterior.
Well, there, there, I, if you actually read facade, uh, guidelines, you actually read the guidelines that are before you tonight, you'll see that there's tremendous similarity. And the similarities using basically I would call historic sensitivity, okay? Secretary of Interior Standards generally, again, trying to be sensitive to historical character. Again, I'm not trying to do historical record, I'm not trying to create a historic district through the back door. That's not what we're trying to do here this evening. We're just trying to set, set a minimum standard. So if somebody does not want to use facade grant funds. There would still be a review process. In words, what, this is what happened before. You just, they, builders just did what they wanted.
Could you show some more examples?
So, uh, another example. Uh, you can see this building here, there, you see a lot of modifications, especially the storefront. Uh, basically, again, insensitive materials, um, um, this, again, the picture to your right shows you, um. You know, really that the first floor, obviously it was a substantial, serious modification from the original storefront. They're using materials that, you know, probably in today's world, we would probably not, we'd be, would have some, would probably recommend, recommend that they go in a different direction. Um, with regards to their kind of log materials, um, and, you know, I'm not saying that this, you know, this has been here for a while. No, again, for the record, nobody, you know, this is, um, nobody's gonna require this owner to remove those materials. Those materials could be there for the next fifty years, could be there for the next hundred years. Nobody's gonna tell him, he has to remove those materials.
Can you give me an example of what you would ask him to do?
Directly?
Yeah.
Well, using the standards that are before you this evening, you would try to, you would try to re, have him, um. Probably incorporate a storefront window, storefront windows. We probably try to find the, the, the location of the door being a, trying to be in the. You know, original location, probably have storefront, storefront windows. Uh, probably try to use materials which are char- inconsistent with the character of the downtown. Yeah, you're talking about a lodge building. That's what you're talking about.
Which one? The left-hand side of the lodge building or right?
The right-hand side. So if, if he said, I'm sorry, let's say theoretically, um, there was a new owner there and they wanted to come through, they were going through, um. Our review process, we probably tried to recommend that they, again, um. You know, be sensitive to the historical character of the downtown. Um, and try to, if at all possible, bring new traditional storefront windows there. Probably not use logs, not that kind of rustic look. It's not really, there's really, no, there's no context to that.
But to the brand of, of business, it's, it's a lot.
Right, well.
They're looking for that as their feel, as the brand for their business. I mean, it's not, certainly not, I don't know if I can say the word color. That we're discussing is, it's more the feel of what they're looking at for their business that they have behind those doors.
Well, again, that's why we're bringing this to you. You have the prerogative. Let's say they wanted to have that. You have the prerogative, say, you know what? Yeah, these are our general guideline standards, but we think. Yeah, we're fine with that. That's your prerogative. That's, you know.
And the one to the left?
The one to the left, um, I think again, um, the door, the door system, you probably.
Okay.
Okay. So the doors there, um, the series of doors there are probably not consistent. There's a series of French doors there, which are probably not consistent with the original character. Uh, again, if I show you the original historic picture of that building, you'd see probably a centrally located door. With two storefront windows, with a bulkhead, probably with millwork. So, I mean, we, we have successful examples. That we've seen recent approvals. That's one, that's one building that was just recently, you know, using facade grant programs. So I think that. This, this is, um, the village board's vision, trying to bring back the historic character, even short and creating a historic district. As we, we, as we, as buildings come in for renovations. Um, especially for facade grant program, but even without the facade grant program, trying to restore the buildings. To the closest ability. Again, they did not, in this case, you have new windows. They did, they did not use wood windows. They didn't use the original windows. They used the aluminum. Window system, so modern materials, but trying to, you know, they actually, it's all painted black now. So this is a picture that was done last spring. They actually replaced the bulkhead, which was all a glass, it's glass block. They replaced it with a millwork. Um, which was again, consistent with the original building character. Um, and I think it's been a substantial dramatic improvement. So that's what the goal of this, of this program is.
Mister Britten, you have any questions?
Yeah, um, with the facade grant or other monetary funds that have been approved. By the village, how often have we strayed from that historic character guideline?
Well, we, a perfect example is we actually worked with Station Fifty-One. So you look Station Fifty-One, I think there, we've had really positive feedback on Station Fifty-One. Across the street to restaurant. Um, that did not duplicate the original historic appearance. So. Obviously, David's, the previous restaurant had modified that building substantially. So, you know, theoretically, we could have said, okay, you had to bring back that building to its exact historic appearance. That's not what we did. But I would submit that, you know, we, we worked with the applicant, the building owner, to try to create a, 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 a facade that was. At least sensitive to the downtown character, has nice brickwork, masonry work, has arched areas, has. Pediments in, in the masonry work, has, it did have some garage doors, but also uses some traditional storefront doors. So that's, that's a good example of where we kind of found a compromise. So we, you know, we were, obviously we're very excited about that business from an economic development perspective. So I think that's the best example we have where we, we really compromised and, but tried to accommodate, uh. Be historically sensitive, but also working with his business plan. So that's, that's a good example of what, what, what we have done and, and probably will do in the future. And then with the Ale House, that was a building that probably didn't have a lot of historic character, the old, um. Barnes is the, Barnes is the bow, the department store had been modified. So we kind of worked with them on that to be a little more flexible. On using materials and things like that.
Um, how often are these projects funded by the business or the business owner?
To be, to be fair, most of the modifications that you've seen.
I'm sorry, the building.
Yeah, and the most of the changes you've seen on Main Street over the past five or six years have come through the facade program. You know, they, so to be fair, most of those.
Who's requesting those then?
The building owners. I mean, yeah, because they, they, they know that there's village funds available. So it's amazing knowing that it's fifty, that we cover fifty percent of the cost, how flexible they are with regards to what we're looking for.
Uh, how many, how many requests are you guys getting for years?
Well, we're probably getting at least, you know, at least one or two applications every other month. I just received two applications this week. So, um, this is not a theoretical discussion, it's actually happening. But I just, for the record, I do have one business building owner, which I'm not gonna disclose tonight. Cause I don't think it's appropriate, um, who I think wants to make some major changes to their building. That, you know, it's been identified as is potentially significant building in our survey. But, you know, I think they would use, they're proposing to use potentially some materials, which I don't think would be in character to our downtown.
Um, do you think these restrictions will prevent people from trying to fix these buildings at all? If our, if our, if our goal is to change the behavior of these dying buildings and create a character. Is this change encouraging that?
Well, I think that, you know, I think that obviously we have enough, to be honest, we have a number of building owners who are comfortable status quo. So they're not putting any money in their buildings. And I, these guidelines will probably have no impact on those building owners. But to be frank, our facade program, i.e. we provide fifty percent of the total cost, has had no impact on those building owners either. They just, they're simply not investing. In fact, it's disinvestment in our downtown. That's one of our biggest challenges. I think that's a side discussion. I don't know. It's appropriate to discuss here tonight, but that's been one of our biggest challenges for staff. Since I've been here is just, we have some building owners who are simply, it's what I call almost demolition by neglect. They're, and we can't force them. We cannot force them to invest in the building. They're, and we can't force them, we cannot force them to invest in the buildings.
Last question, and it's probably a, a separate topic too, but I still get hung up on almost all the discussions we have on the form-based code changes. Why is this only the down, considered the downtown?
Because, and yeah, I'll be honest, and you've been doing this long enough, Aniac's not ready for a full form base code. I mean, there's only a handful communities in the Chicago area that have, you're talking about a form-based code for the whole village?
No, I'm more so talking about why is downtown only considered the village to the art store, whatever, at the end of Lake Street.
Oh, okay.
You know, and then Lake Street down to, I don't even remember the math that well, but why is that only considered downtown? Why isn't downtown inclusive of Piggly Wiggly and?
Well, it is. To be fair, the form-based code does, if you actually look at the form-based code.
If they try and change Piggly Wiggly, this would be included?
Yeah, we, you know, it would be actually. We would, we would review, you know, we would basically, we would review Piggly Wiggly. I mean, if they wanted to demolish Piggly Wiggly, build something new, then our site plan review orders would kick in. But the form-based code would kick in if somebody wanted to make a major change to that center.
50% or more.
Or whatever.
I, I agree. I think that numbers.
Yeah, I think.
So we can come back with, we can come back with a lower number, we can have speci, we can have specific items, like I said, bullet points, major window changes, material changes.
Kind of why I said all sides.
All sides. We won't incorporate colors, but
Yeah, because if you look at, I'm sorry.
No, no, you're
Like it's Phil Patrick's, right? That's on the corner. They, they only, the only change they could really make aside from obviously the brick on the side, but is their building, the windows. I mean, they have windows on both sides that face lake and 83. So if you, I mean, it's a lot of windows, I believe, but where would you, at that point, like, where, what would you limit them to? Right? 50%, is all the windows replaced 50%? Is they only do one side versus the other?
Yeah, I think that's why we need to have, maybe we, maybe have more defined specific criteria.
In, in past, windows have always been kind of a, a sticking point in every community's reconfiguration for any building that's been brought up.
As you can do, you can damage the character of a building by putting really bad windows in there.
Just doing windows are less than 50% or even 25% of what you have for a facade or for front of people.
Right.
And so, so that right there is, is a very specific item, which is why I mentioned just a few of the very correct companies that would do well.
Right.
Versus the materials that I said, like, you know, vinyl.
Yeah, no, I mean, I say, other than changing the materials, windows are probably the biggest issue because you can, you can completely damage the character of a building and damage the character of your downtown by putting really bad windows or windows which are not consistent with the character of that building.
Or changing the size or otherwise.
Right. And you see that all over.
Absolutely.
To that point, if you have someone who is a business owner, a building owner, and they're already not investing in their building, but they have to fix one leaky window.
Yeah.
You know, it's not, they could go buy the cheapest window, put it in there and they don't care what it looks like. Well, now it, it looks terrible as, you know, people walk by.
Absolutely correct.
And that's one of our biggest issues is we, we have that problem and we're, we, we, that's not theoretical issue. It's an actual, we've been, we've been struggling with that for years. We have building owners who are simply just neglecting their buildings.
I thi, I think you have to put more, if you're saying, more detail within the layers of the improvements. So the windows.
Doors.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think you kind of have
Windows, doors, materials.
Yeah, and materials and
Don't call under the percentage.
Yeah.
We can, I can come back with revised language, incorporate that. That's where I'm at.
I had a, I had a couple of questions. So I, I'm in agreement with a lot of things that have been said tonight. I feel, I just feel like we have this opportunity here to kind of change not only the front, but the back of the buildings as well. I hear that loud and clear. There's so many times where, you know, we hear our Fourth of July celebrations, one of the best round, where people come from all over and they park, you know, all around our community. And I, I lived right here in the village and I had to walk up because Piggly Wiggly's parking lot was completely full where people are, you know, walking through there. Toffed Avenue is a big area for us to have these, you know, big events. I just think that it's, we have an opportunity here to really look at this, the backs of the building, front, all the way around. So completely agree with all that said, Michael, one of the questions I had was around what, what Commissioner Carson's brought up was kind of the area that's at hand here. I was under the impression we're talking about the Village Corridor. So can you tell us exactly where this outline happens? Like, is it 173 to North Avenue? Is it Lake Street? Where, where are we talking that we are going to be voting out for this?
Well, it's, it's really your prerogative. Right now, the general area is within the form-based code. So that would cover obviously the whole Route 83 corridor from 173 all the way up to North Avenue. It would cover, it basically just along both sides of Main Street. It covers basically the whole area between Orchard and Lake going all the way, well, past Hillside, it would, you know, out, out near Anastasia's. The form-based code covers, you know, actually the hard corner of, let's say, Walgreens, Walgreens and Aniac High School. That's in the form-based code. The building, Mr. G's on North Avenue, that's in the form-based code. Anastasia's, that's in the form-based code. So it would include all those areas. Now, it's your prerogative or ultimately the village board's prerogative to say, yeah, we think that's too broad. We want to narrow it down. So that, that you could be open for discussion. But I think it's a fair point, you know, do you want, if somebody wants to, you know, tear down a building on Main Street, let's say towards North Avenue, do you want to have an opportunity to do that? I think you can make an argument that you should, you know, but it would be appropriate to review it.
Yeah, I, I'd agree. Okay. And then the other question I had was around, I was reviewing the document that you had put together here. Thank you for that. There was a comment around if lighting was going to be changed, you know, I have a passion for the lighting piece for this, that we would ask for the, you know, certain fixtures to be replaced, be brought more, whether the fixture is more historical looking, et cetera. Do we have any thought process around like color temperatures that we're trying to, to hit on? Because, you know, you drive downtown, we have a really, you know, I, I think the lighting looks really neat downtown and it's more of like an incandescent orange glow, which is more, I would call historical. In this, are we going to be asking building owners and maybe just on the front side, right? The backside, it wouldn't matter as much, especially from like a safety perspective, but like on the front side, are we going to be asking them to, to mirror that like incandescent glow? So it's uniform as you're driving through the downtown?
Yeah, I mean, that's obviously, it's something that you would have the right to basically review. You have the right to ask those questions and talk about lighting and what you think is appropriate for that building as each building comes through the review process. So lighting is one of those components, you know, that you would have an opportunity to review, you know. I mean, we, we spend a lot of time talking about lighting for the facade program. So it would be appropriate to discuss lighting as each of these buildings comes through the process, if they're proposing significant changes to their exterior.
Okay, it's huge too.
We'll have the chair running.
Okay. I, I mean, we got a lot of good questions here tonight. We can keep on going from, I don't care how long we go on tonight, but I think we're kind of all hitting on the same point here that there are a couple of main points I think we're, we've hit on tonight. One is the 50% number has to be changed like that into maybe more of a listing of items rather than a percentage of the side like that. And, and on that, I think that's the, the major point that we want to, that we're hitting on here tonight. And, and it's been a lot of good points. I saw, I mean, I would recommend at this point, or I'll take a motion, if someone wants to make a motion like that, that, but you take this back, rethink all the notes that we, we have here tonight and then, you know, give us another shot at it. I think we're, you know, working towards a, a good, some good things here tonight.
Right, that's fine.
Like that.
Yeah, no, I've been, I'm happy to do that. Just come back with revised text about that section of the form-based code. What triggers our review and have some bullet points or a little more detail versus the 50%?
Yeah, more than just the 50%. That's, me, there's, that's a big loophole that somebody could jump through like that. And then the other point was even to the fact that some of the building owners that, like you said, are not interested in really developing or reconditioning their buildings, that sooner or later, they do have to make repairs to them because of that. And at that point, we, you know, may give us the village some way of providing input into them about how, how those things should be done.
Yeah, well, we're, we're exploring other poss, and we're, we're working with the village attorney to explore other avenues for, under more through code enforcement. You know, to maybe under, whether it's property maintenance code or UFO property maintenance code or whatever, if there's any opportunities, but that's something we can do to discuss more through code enforcement.
Yep. And then one last thing I would throw in that we didn't really get to tonight is, is just, you know, building efficiency of the building. There was insulation, heating systems, the, the R value of the glass in the buildings and things like that, that when they get in to do some modifications that some of that gets, gets looked at so that we have, we're not looking for, you know, green buildings downtown here, but, but definitely some of these buildings, I think would would, would do the village good to, to make it look like that they're somewhat energy efficient buildings and
No, absolutely. Yeah, we're, we're, right, no, absolutely. As we bring new buildings to the process, whether it's Station 51 or Ale House, we're bringing all those buildings up to code.
Okay.
You know, obviously some of the original buildings which have not been touched for decades, are probably, they probably do not adhere to our electrical codes or things like that right now.
Yeah.
To, to add on to the lighting issue, everything has changed over the past four to five years with lighting. Incandescence was everything that we were used to, period. And now everything is LEDs and LEDs are done on temperature. And to the temperature sensitivity for Main Street, yes, something around 2,500 to 3,000 K temperature is more yellow and to our liking for what we have for very sensitive downtown looking area, whereas you go 4,000, 5,000 K, now it's, you know, right to the blue bright
Doctor's.
Daylight, doctor's office, operating room, but the, the sensitivity on that would be something to have in this too, with everything that you've already mentioned. It's, it's tough. That's, that's totally changed, totally changed. So.
For a procedural standpoint, would you be asking to refer this back?
Absolutely. I'll, I'll make a motion.
We're going to get a motion here in a minute on that.
I'll make a motion to, to send it back to staff to help define this better with some of our suggestions and that process going forward.
And bring this back just so we can continue the public hearing to, to the next hearing date?
Sure. I'll say, I have a motion. I have a second.
A second.
I'm sorry, who's the motion?
Motion was by Mr. Carter.
Ryan?
Yes.
McCarthy?
Yes.
Kirsten said?
Yes.
Madigan?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Can I get a motion to adjourn please?
So moved.
Ryan?
Yes.
McCarthy?
Yes.
Kirsten said?
Yes.
Madigan?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Getting adjourned.